So here except for Craig Johnson, trying to make his way in from Minneapolis. He went a little bit late. Next citizen comments, I don't believe there are any, so we'll go right into winter commendations.
Okay. So we have some winter commendations and if you could just come up, the school board and people here and administrators will stand up and they'll, you just come around and shake their hands because they want to congratulate you and then I'll give you your certificate at the end. I'll be set some, alright? So let's start with wrestling. I'm not sure who we have here.
Swimmers.
They're all swimmers.
They're all swimmers.
Let's start with swim and dive. Okay, so we have Wyatt Lawrence and we have Wade Lawrence. So the brothers went to state together. Congratulations.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
You had to put up with the whole weekend.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And so Ryan, Ryan Cruft also went to state for swim and dive and he was in the 400 free relay.
Yeah, we got a quick meeting like this.
And Wyatt got 19th place in 200 yard. Wyatt also got 15th place in 100 yard breaststroke. And Wade got 15th place in state for 100 yard backstroke. So those are quite the accomplishments, I think. Is that all back here?
Yep.
Be sure. We don't have Connor.
Yes.
We don't have Colton. Just making sure. Zachary Orlando. Wrestler student coming. Thank you for coming. Really appreciate it.
All right, we'll move into a board member committee report. Sheriff Howard.
Community education meeting, yeah, and the minutes are supposed to eventually show up on the board book.
Yeah.
Unless Gwen has them here. Because usually Ryan just pumps them up.
I just had the executive committee last Wednesday we met, so.
I didn't have anything.
Had the executive committee meeting and finance reports.
I attended the homeless forum that the district hosted and I was at finance.
And I just had the finance today.
And I also attended the homeless forum that was hosted by the district and the C regional meeting in Isanti and we talked about the policy bill that has some mandates and health curriculum, the five star rating that Julia talked about in her update and the academic balance with Rachel disparities and restorative justice and those particular things.
Student council report.
Well, I just got back from California. That was fun and stuff. I went to the archery thing because I kind of do that stuff. We took first in state. That was exciting. But then I did talk to student council about a lot of the stuff that we talked about in our last workshop, like languages and stuff. And I don't know if that's something I should talk about now, but I'll just bring it back. There's just a lot of stuff we talked about. And I did ask a lot of the students because I remember at the last meeting we were at, because we always pondered like the enrollment thing and why students are leaving. And so I got a lot of information on why students think that students are leaving, if you're ever curious about that. And then I also got a thing on incentive day and how we should probably bring that back because a lot of kids aren't caring like if they're missing school anymore. Because honestly, I know that I've gotten more lazy in that and how like it's not a huge deal if they miss anyone.
We can't.
Well, no, it's like, students care if they miss school. And it's like, you know, when we had incentive day, people would like stay home if they were extremely sick. But now students are like, oh, I have a little cough, I'm going to stay home. Like they just get warm. So there's just a bunch of stuff I can talk to you about later, unless you want that now.
Okay. We have surveys going out this week to staff, parents, students. We've been doing surveys, the same survey for the last five years. And we use that when we look at goals that we need to work on. And it's been extremely helpful to have those surveys and just to watch the trends as they go up and down. Sue mentioned the five star rating. I've been, I'm not really a politically active person like going out on marches or anything like that. But this hit my hot button because this five star rating that's being proposed is just for MCA scores, just whatever your score is, and your graduation rate. And I don't think it really gives context. For instance, the last five years, we've increased our reading scores by double digits. That would not be portrayed in there. We are really big into PBIS and working on social emotional learning and so on. That is nowhere to be found. I mean, it's just not, it's not got the depth to it that I think that we need to have. So I've been writing every congressperson I can find. And some people agree with me. Representative Erickson and I agreed on it. And there were several other people too. So I'll be surprised if it gets passed, but stranger things have happened. So I'm about halfway through with my classroom visits. And so we're getting close to the end of the year, so I'm going to have to pedal down to get that done so that I can say I've done 200 visits again this year. And frankly, it's like the best job ever to go out and see what's happening in those classrooms. It's just amazing what our teachers do and the planning they put in and how rich the lessons are for kids. I'm just very impressed by our teachers. They inspire me every time I go out. So I will get 100 more done before the end of the year.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Devon.
Second.
Chad Young, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, discuss an act on previous board minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the previous board minutes?
So moved.
Motion was made by Craig Johnson. Is your second?
Second.
Second by Sue Van Hooser. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Devon, second by Howard Boundcourt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
I was gonna say, yeah, and a gift, thank you to all those people that donated for the big read. There was a ton.
There's a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, it's huge. I mean, so yeah, thank you to everybody. That was huge.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next, information, first reading of policies. They're all right there for your enjoyment if you want to take a look at them. Do you have anything you want? Boilerplate?
It is, there really aren't huge changes, but we have the minutes here about it. We added a graphic from our strategic plan in 104. We corrected a lot formatting. Or I didn't. I shouldn't say we, Emily did. And in the superintendent evaluation, we updated the setting of the goals terminology. We also updated legal references in 904 and no changes in 905 or 907. And then we just changed the names or the points of contact without the names included. Or 908 for data access.
There you go. Next on, strategic plan goal report, goal number five.
That's me?
Yeah, Gwen.
Let's communicate about communication. Goal number five on our strategic plan is about communication. Oh, that was a little panic. And this is supposed to be like an introduction to goal five, but I've talked about it to you several times. And it's more about things that are currently happening right now in regard to our, our goals and objectives around communication. And the first, the first goal under communication is to increase staff engagement. If you recall, we did a survey with Barb Nichols a few years back and she recommended that we do some work around communication. One of the things that we're doing is, is we're going to take another look at what her recommendations were and, and look at what progress we've made on those goals. That was part of our strategic planning around communication. So that's one thing that I didn't put in here. But continue to develop partnerships, processes, and communication loops with staff is like the big kahuna of goal number five. Because we got feedback on people that, from our staff and some constituents, that they didn't feel they had a voice or they didn't feel heard. And we took that seriously and we developed some systems around that that we've been implementing. And some of the evidence that we are doing this is that we're making connections and developing systematic approaches to our communication. We're being very intentional about making sure that people are included in our decision-making processes. One of the ways we've, we've done that is when Jessica came on board, we have our leadership committees and we kind of defined and made a visual graphic for people to look at called the patterns of influence. If you recall, oh, it worked. This is what that looks like. You'll notice the district branding on here too. You, you can't read it. But what this tells us is, is this, it visually defines the system of communicating. And what a communication loop looks like on this map is that we, we cut, people give us feedback, we develop an idea, we try to verbalize it, we sit down in the directors committee and we discuss it and we decide how we can bring it forward to the rest of the district. And we talk to the administrative team about that. And we talk to the DILT team or district leadership team about this. Then it's vetted in steering, our steering committee. We have all kinds of teacher leaders in coordinator roles that go then communicate to the teacher groups. And it's, and, and then decisions are made and it goes to the board. So it's, and it's depicted by a tree because it's ever growing and it's cyclical. You know, decisions get made and we go back, we get feedback. It gets vetted with very, all of these various groups and it goes in a loop. It's called a communication loop. And it ensures that people, people's opinions and input are valued. And I think we've made progress on that. I think we've made a lot of progress. And we will find out when we get the results of our survey that we just sent out, if our perception is different than others. That's what's going to tell us. And we can compare that to the last four years with that data. So developing these intentional loops of communication so that staff and constituents have a voice and can give input and feedback when we're developing and implementing new things. And some other examples of communication loops besides the Princeton paradigm, that we just recently also got input on our calendar where we sent it out to various stakeholders or the teachers, right, and the public and asked them questions about what they wanted to see in the district calendar. And then we made decisions and finalized and came to for final approval. That's another communication loop. The new superintendent, we asked for feedback from our constituency and our staff about what they would like to see in a new superintendent. Polling staff prior to staff development days where the staff have been shaping what we do on staff development days. And we've been utilizing our staff more in the implementation of those staff development days and empowering people, our teacher leaders, because there's a wealth of knowledge within our district. And that in turn provides really good empowerment for those teachers and what we're calling collective efficacy. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We're investing more efforts and intentionality into creating collective efficacy. There it is already. We've been reading a book, can you hold that book up? Exhibit A, collective efficacy. We've been reading this in our district administrative team and sharing out about various chapters and what collective efficacy means. And this is a big, the big buzz in education right now, is that it's a belief that through collective actions, teachers have the power to have a profound impact on student outcomes. And what, and the key word there is a belief. If I believe that I can have an impact on students, I'm going to be a much more effective educator. It's the belief itself that creates the effect of education. This, the, a school with high collective efficacy shows greater effort, persistence, and a willingness to try new teaching approaches. It looks like teachers who know they can make a difference. It looks like teachers trying new things and it looks like increases in enjoyment in the, in the teaching staff. Some of the common goals that are, and common goals have been generated by our teachers and ways that we've been doing this is we merged, we, we got a lot of feedback about social emotional learning and we knew that in our district, we need to do work around social emotional learning. And we merged the, the district PBIS team with the DILT team. Last time we talked, we brought in Clay Cook and they decided what staff development would be done and how we would utilize Clay Cook's skills and what the next staff development day would look like. And on that staff development day, we included all of our staff. We had bus drivers there, we had paraprofessionals there, we had secretaries there. Did I miss anyone? So, so every, everyone is learning about the impact that they have on students and we can recognize one another for the work that we're doing. We invited, oh, and also to that meeting where we merged the PBIS and DILT team, there's all of these little pockets of people doing work around social emotional learning and behaviors in students. And we invited, we, we, we found those little pockets and we invited them to that meeting and merged meeting to do work around what we need staff development wise around being more effective in teaching those skills. So, one of the other things that is happening is we, we're recognizing that they're building collective efficacy at the, the building leadership team at the high school where people are rallying around, around college and career readiness and they're developing programs and systems for how we can most effectively meet the needs of individual students. And that enthusiasm is infectious. So that's really cool to see. The next goal, oh, I'm not in presentation mode. Sorry. Is to build an open and welcome image that encourages connections, to build capacity in staff and district communications to create and foster a welcoming environment and build a culture of service because we're here for the consumer, to communicate and train staff on the new brand and website and to present a cohesive and consistent district image to staff, parents, community, and community members. And, and that's what we've talked about before. It's like, we need to, when we see something from the district, we need to know that is from the school district. And I think we've done a lot of work around that. I'm going to show you a couple of things here. Evidence is we're building capacity through regular face-to-face communication with the secretaries, custodians, and paraprofessional staff, including, or there's inclusion and training in staff, on staff development days where people are being included and feel like they can make a difference and have a voice. And the cohesive district image, it's continuous development of the website. We have weekly website meetings where we look at our goals and what we, like phase two of the website because it's an ongoing process and it's being updated, not as much as we would like, but constantly. And we are reviewing it every week to say, have we, have we made any progress on this? Have we made any progress on that? We need to get the academics up there, you know. We've recently subcontracted with a company that goes through and does scans on our website and we get a weekly report on are there any broken links? Are there any misspellings? Is what have we done around ADA accessibility on our website? And it's kind of prompting us to take action. But we're trying to remind ourselves weekly that we need to be intentional about taking a look at it. The secretaries in all the buildings and various other people now know how to put news posts up. So we're building capacity in that area. And we're using our brand much more, you see it on publications. And I'm going to show you just a couple here. But you can tell that this is from the district, right? It's got the same colors as the website. It's got consistent fonts and text.
Is that school?
Oh, that was a little snaffing. This was the invitation to the world's best workforce night for gathering. This is one of the pages that was built for our learning and living committee on the website. They look very similar, using similar icons that are on the strategic plan. This is that, the patterns of influence, about how our communication loop is. This was a free and reduced lunch visual graphic, making it easier to understand how to apply and where to do it and why we need people to do that. Here's the strategic plan. But again, you can tell that all of these things come from our school district. So we're, we're building capacity. This is an interesting thing. We, I created this preschool timeline because parents come to the registration kickoff on March 19th. And especially if they bring their kids and they tell them, yeah, you're going to school. And then it's March. And then a four-year-old or a three-year-old does not understand that they're going to school in September, right? But this isn't for the kids. But it's for the parents because they don't get a communication for us for some time. And we weren't really communicating that to them. So we'd get questions about, and we'd keep verbalizing, no, you'll, first you'll get a letter, we'll tell you who your teacher is, then we'll do this, then we'll do this, then we'll do this. And we're communicating this over and over again. So we came up with this graphic that says in mid-July, you'll get a letter telling you about the school supplies and who your teacher is in early August. Then you can apply for scholarship. And the kindergarten, the secretaries at the primary saw this and they thought, you know what? We get all these questions too all the time. And they developed one that's even better than mine. I think it's more visually appealing. But again, it's consistent with what we're doing. So a byproduct of seeing something is saying, wow, that's useful. Let's, let's recreate it for our school. And it becomes a district-wide thing. The, the final objective under the communication goal is recruit students early and improve district-wide tiger pride. We've been focusing efforts this year. We have a new preschool registration system and it's online and people are able to pay, uh-oh. People are able to now register and pay online. But it also gives us the ability to sort by any demographic field. So we know, we have a much better understanding of who's coming to our preschool program. And ECFE is not yet on there. But that includes 240 kids that we have a lot of information on and we can sort by any given field. Do they qualify for free reduced lunch? Do they need transportation? So we've kind of, we know more about the kids we're serving in preschool. And we developed a new program called Hand in Hand on Wheels where on Friday afternoons, the gen ed teachers from the classrooms are going out and showing daycare providers the curriculum that we're using and the assessment tool that we're using in our, our preschool program. So the kids that aren't necessarily coming to us, we're reaching out for them. And I'd like to build that. Eventually we'll get all 220 to 40 to 60 of them, hopefully. Further development of tiger pride across the district and community. We've melded the tiger pride PBIS goals with the social emotional learning and we're trying to define what that looks like when we're actually doing more teaching of social emotional goals. And, and those communication loops that I talked to you about, it's being done at a district-wide level. So I think we're going to have a much, a greater understanding of what that's going to take if we're all looking at it and working together. Does anyone have any questions? Any communication?
Looks great.
Well, thank you.
Doing a good job.
Thank you. Alright.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, we'll move into action items. Under second ratings of policies, your motion to accept the second read.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Craig Johnson, second by Chad Young. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Princeton Online Academy, is there a motion to approve the administration changing online academy from grades three to twelve to nine, twelve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Sue Van Hooser, second by Howard Boundcourt. Is there any discussion? Moving over this in our workshop, as a reminder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
C, motion to authorize administration the use of the $20,000 Bush grant to be used for review of high school options for innovative programming.
So moved.
For second.
I'll second.
Motion was Craig Johnson, second by Devon. Is there any discussion?
I want to thank Jess because I missed the workshop and we finally connected and she gave me a rundown on everything on her own time. But I do have one question because the academic programs and stuff on this one, this is still a work in progress, correct? Because Sue and I had a brief conversation. There are classes listed on here that haven't been taught in ages. And there are classes in the registration book, I believe, that are programmed on here. So that's going to be looked at and cleaned up and done.
I think what Barb would tell you is both documents are in progress.
And if that's in progress, I think is what I'm really concerned about. Because, you know, I have a beef. And we've got the one, we got communications and we have nothing listed with my favorite topic that I beef about in a number of areas. And like I said, a number of things listed there have gone by the wayside. And as long as it's going to be cleaned up, I'm okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Letter D, the 2018-19 Unassigned Budget Guide, their motion to authorize the administration to decrease the 18-19 preliminary unassigned budget projections by 500,000. by $500,000.
Second.
Motion by Chad Young, second by Craig Johnson. Is there any discussion?
Was that, um, figured just, did you decide on that in finance? Is that, or is that, are you following recommendation from our workshop or where did that start?
Yes, started in the workshop, recommendation.
We're kind of in an enviable position when you look at our neighbors who are doing kind of harsh cuts. But it's our philosophy in our district that if we do a little trimming every year, we can stay within our budget and still have a fund balance so that we need our 10% in our policy for a fund balance and still be in a very solid position financially. So administration would feel like $500,000 is kind of, that's our compromise number between Michelle and me. And just because there's a number of $500,000 out there does not mean that's going to be all staffing. We are looking at as many ways as possible to keep as many of our staff FTEs in our district. Because we, we're, we're in the business of educating students, so. But like Julia said, we, we have to maintain a fund balance. We're in a good position. And we, we walked through some possibilities with finance tonight of how that might work. We have not worked through with the administration team. So we get the guidelines, then we'll get involved. But we'll come back with a solid staffing fund. We don't have a doubt.
All right, any other discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
I'm gonna abstain on this because I missed the workshop and I didn't, I'm, I don't feel like totally in the loop on this one yet, so I'm gonna abstain.
Yes.
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 Did you hear that?
Thank you.
Next up, school board, financial directive, your motion to accept the resolution as presented. For a second.
Second.
This is a state law. And this has to be a full call.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Second. Devin Chan.
Thank you.
All right. I mean, I'm sorry, that's not, Devin Eric.
They look alike.
Any discussion? I was gonna say it's a state statute, we have to do it. So we'll have to do it by roll call and we'll vote from other end of the table.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
There are no additions to the meetings, to the agenda. Future meetings, just in reference to the executive committee, our project is not doable for me. That is your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
I said 20 minutes.
It's a really short.
I know, you were on.
This morning meeting for our chief girls.